I could have the prayer and then, I mean, yeah, the prayer and then after the prayer, if we could have just a moment of silence in honor of Rita Smith, who spent 10 years in one of these seats as a councilperson, who recently passed away, just a moment of silence for her. Thank you.
Our Father, who art in heaven, as a body we congregate in this council chamber, we pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Williams, please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Here.
Mr. Gabbert.
Here.
Mr. Geraci.
Here.
Mr. Kelch.
Here.
Mr. Donardo.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Brayden.
Here.
All members present. Item E, amendment of agenda. We have a couple requests to amend the agenda. Excuse me, amend the agenda, easy for me to say. First, we have a letter. This letter is from Chuck Barlow, the tax commissioner. I would like to have the letter read prior to item L. Also, third readings of ordinances. We will add the ordinance repealing the prohibition against the keeping or harboring of honeybees and the declaration that any beehive within the city of Norwood is a public nuisance and regulating the keeping and harboring of honeybees within the city of Norwood. So we'll have that third reading as well. Anything else? Mr. Bunsel, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd move that we approve the amendments that you just stated.
Motion by Mr. Bunsel. Mr. Brayden.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brayden. Motion is to amend the agenda as stated. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
Next, we have item F, minutes of the previous meeting from January 28th, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion? Mr. Brayden.
A motion to accept the meetings as written.
Motion by Mr. Brayden. Mr. Geraci.
Second.
Second by Mr. Geraci. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
All members present, voting aye. Motion passes. Item G, discussion and invitation for public comments on Donna Cap LLC doing business as Cappies. Do I have anyone that would like to speak in favor? Yes, please go forward. Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Kate Wetzel. I live at 3811 Regent. Thank you very much for the time.
I'm Lindsay Matthews. I'm on 2150 Loons Avenue. Also, thank you.
All right. Now, Cappies is a household name for craft beer lovers in Cincinnati. Their level of location is well-known in the local beer community, and we were excited when a second location was opening in Norwood. The owners and employees are knowledgeable, and customer service has been fantastic, and I feel welcome and comfortable every time I walk into the store. We, and as we, I mean several South Norwood families, would like to see them be able to expand their business and offer a taproom and eventually a patio to enjoy beer and to take part in wine tastings. Conveniently located, walkable, and bikeable, Cappies can be a nice place for the community to meet up with friends and neighbors. This is a great opportunity to show Norwood supports the growth of small businesses and help them become more involved in the community. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay.
Alicia Locke, 3738 Spencer Avenue. I met with Kate and the owner of Cappies, and I'm not huge into craft beer or anything, but I just wanted to say, as somebody who lives close to them, I think that what they are trying to do is really cool, and we were just really impressed with the way he wanted to hear from us and when it took our input and our suggestions. So I think you guys should really consider doing that, so support small business.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? For or against? Against.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Will DeLuca. My address is 3758 Montgomery Road, 3760 Montgomery Road, 3762 Montgomery Road, 3764 Montgomery Road, 3770 Montgomery Road, 4629 Montgomery Road, 5135 Montgomery Road, 2446 Indian Mount. Lifelong member of Norwood. I raised my family here, opened my business here, poured my heart into Norwood. I've invested just about every penny I had in South End of Norwood at a time when no one, everyone thought I was nuts. Everyone thought I was crazy. Quite frankly, so did my own family. But I did it. I stuck my neck out, and I made something out of nothing. And then shortly after, I had problems. And, you know, we've heard about the police runs, the 100-plus police runs, and we hear that some were just stops and these types of runs and those types of runs. And I say to those folks who want to nitpick everything, look at the valid runs. Look at the runs that, when a gentleman stuck a gun to my head because my parking lot was being hijacked. Look about the runs where allegedly illegal activity was taking place there. This went on for quite some time, and I notified the owners, called them several times, told them about the issues. I had a customer of mine flat-out tell me, call me on a busy Friday evening, that, hey, Will, we tried to come to your place, park in your lot, and we were ran off. And I said, what do you mean, you were ran off? Well, as we were pulling into the spot, a large man who was standing in front of the door at the adjacent business ran us off and said we couldn't park there. I didn't believe him. I thought he had to have been mistaken. And then it happened again and again. So the following Friday night, I took stakeout inside my property there on the corner, the old bread store. I wanted to see it with my own eyes, and right away it happened. As soon as a patron of mine pulled into the lot, their employee ran up and said, you can't park here, you can't park here. And that's when I went outside and I confronted him. At that point, I hired a tow truck company, and I told them, if you can't get the job done, I will find somebody that will. The first evening, they towed 19 cars out of my lot. And this continued day after day after day after day. It was relentless. I had their employees shouting at me, their employees ridiculing me, their employees making false accusations about me. And then it came to a head one Friday evening. As cars were being towed, one of the people's cars who had previously been towed was very upset, happened to be a friend of an employee that was working there, walked up to me and put a gun straight to my head. My wife and child witnessed this. No one should have to put up with this. I don't care how good craft beer is. There's plenty of craft beer throughout Cincinnati. I encourage small business development. I want good business people to be business leaders in Norwood. Good business people. But not at my expense. And I think it's very selfish for people to say that, hey, we believe they're going to do this, and we... No, I'm saying you weren't there to witness it. They have their backs up against the wall. They need something. That's why they are here. Nothing prevented them from running a legitimate business as they do in Loveland. Nothing did. They chose to run it the way that they did, and we allowed it. That should have never been a state liquor store, but council at the time allowed it. We didn't do our due diligence. We didn't do our job. And I'm saying right here, right now, if we allow this tax transfer to come into Norwood, you have now opened the door for additional problems. An establishment that has had issues with underage consumption. I mean, look, county prosecutors and judges just don't sign orders to shut businesses down. You just don't do it. They do it because it's very serious, and it happened. They were raided by the ATF. I get it. What's out in Loveland is cool. It's posh. I went out there myself. It is. But they chose to run Norwood completely different. Nothing prevented them from doing that. I'm just trying to run my business. I'm trying to expand. I keep investing in Norwood. I believe in Norwood. I want businesses to be in Norwood, but I want good, responsible, respectable ownership. And as we sit here and try to change the reputation of Norwood, as we say, we're done with all the ridicule, we're done with... We are about change, and I believe we are. This is where it starts, right here, right now. There's nothing we can do to stop the state from issuing their wine license that they were, the quota went up. But there's something we can do to stop the tax transfer. That's where we hold the power. And it sends a signal to everyone else out there, we will not tolerate this type of behavior. They called it a death sentence. No one did it but themselves. No one. This is not about competition. This is not about me being jealous or threatened about business. Look, I had another specialty pizza parlor open up across the street from me, spend over a million, too, making it a very nice place. I think I survived that storm. It's not about competition whatsoever. It's about having peace of mind and being able to run your business and not have to worry about your kids. And when you know there's a problem, you address it. I get it. I'm the first one to say people deserve a second chance, but let's look at what happened there. This is not about competition. This is not about jealousy. This is not about... This sets a precedent to say that, hey, we will just look the other way. So I wholeheartedly hope you folks deny the tax transfer. Something has to be done. There's barricades right now down at my place, because the moment I remove them, it gets taken over. And the activity that's so, you know, ended, I beg to differ. My property adjoins their property. We see it, we smell it. It happens all the time. They choose to run a business that way. No one forced them. They could have been just like Loveland way back then, but they chose to run it that way. So please, I beg you, please do not allow the tax transfer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. Anyone else that wants to speak?
Hi, I'm Mike Lehman from 3763 Floral Avenue. I own Adina Distributing, a small craft beer distributor. I've known Ben for about, since 2012, and I would say, if you're going to get a pine license for these guys, we see, we have lots of customers that have a mix of on-premise and off-premise. Allowing them to have that would be pretty common for a lot of similar businesses, higher gravity in Norwood, or Northside. There's Marty's Hops and Vines up in College Hill, and I think that would be great, and I live right down the street. It'd be fantastic to have that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening? Want to make sure, give everyone an opportunity? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item H, request to address council on agenda items. Ms. Emily Fransen.
Hello, this is Emily Fransen from 4207 Forest Avenue. I'll keep this really short. I just wanted to say thank you all for passing the ordinance, the first two readings, and I look forward to having it get passed for this third reading. It was really an informative process to be a part of this ordinance-making process, and I'm glad it went pretty smoothly. I also wanted to extend an invitation to anyone who might be interested in getting into beekeeping, now that it is legal in Norwood. We're going to have an introduction to beekeeping on either April 16th or April 17th. It depends on weather, and obviously, I don't know what it's going to be right now. So we're going to have it at Xavier, and if you want to get into beekeeping or just want to know more about it, it's free. We will be happy to have you, and we'll have some honey there if you need to. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item I, reports of standing committees of council. Streets and Infrastructure Committee report. Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm on the State February 18th, 2020, to the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio. We, your streets and infrastructure, to whom was referred, discussion of Quatman Avenue parking, traffic patterns on Wesley Avenue, Marion Avenue, and Ash Street, and discussions of a street plan. Beg leave to submit the following report. Our committee addressed parking on the east side of Quatman Avenue between Homer and Fenwick Avenue. Assistant Chief McCabe addressed our committee with the fire department's concerns regarding adequate space for the fire trucks and outriggers to reach Heritage Hill complex without the interference from parking. We agreed to continue discussion and obtain more input on this subject. Traffic patterns for Wesley Avenue, Marion Avenue, and Ash Street were also considered. After the lengthy discussion, it was determined that a traffic study may be helpful in determining solutions to traffic flow in this area. Our committee also reviewed and discussed the repaving, repairing, and maintenance plan. We discussed concerns about how future decisions are made to achieve fairness for our citizens regarding which streets are repaired. We also agreed that a study of our streets in their entirety, the underground utilities, and a grading system would be a useful tool. Respectfully submitted, John Brayden, chairperson, Mr. Geraci, Mr. Kelch, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Thompson.
I move that we receive and file the report.
Motion by Mr. Thompson. Second by Mr. Donardo. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members voting aye. Motion passes.
I just wanted to add, the Finance Committee's report is available, but I don't know if everyone signed it in time. I can read it, or I can wait till the next.
I don't think we have it. We can just...
We'll just wait till next.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Donardo. Moving on to item J, third readings of ordinance and resolutions. Item 1, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Hamilton County, Ohio, to provide its services and disposing of city surplus personal property. Mr. Thompson.
I move we have the third reading of this ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Thompson to have the third reading. Mr. Brayden.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. Motion passes. Please read the read.
An ordinance authorizing a contract with Hamilton County, Ohio, to provide its services in disposing of city surplus personal property.
Mr. Gabbert.
I make a motion that we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Gabbert. Second by Mr. Bunsel. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. The ordinance passes. Item J2, an ordinance repealing the prohibition against the keeping or harboring of honeybees and the declaration that any beehive within the city of Norwood is a public nuisance and regulating the keeping and harboring of honeybees within the city of Norwood. Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we have the third reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Bunsel. Mr. Thompson. Second by Mr. Thompson. Please call the roll. Oh, any discussion? Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you very much. I just want to acknowledge, you know, Emily Fransen, who spoke, her husband, Justin Fransen, who also spoke at the committee meeting that we had on this, and then Brandon Reynolds is here as well. So Brandon, if you'd stand up for a second here. So Brandon is with Bee the Keeper, an organization that works with lots of different organizations to have beehives at like corporate places, schools, I don't know, maybe churches, but they're all around, and I think there's a few places in Norwood that are looking for his services. And so it's an exciting day that we're at the point where we'll do the third reading and hopefully pass the ordinance, and just really want to thank them, you know, Emily, Justin, and Brandon for all of their work in helping us, me, to bring this ordinance to you all and to hopefully get it over the finish line. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bunsel. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. Please have the read.
An ordinance repealing the prohibition against the keeping or harboring of honeybees and the declaration that any beehive within the city of Norwood is a public nuisance and regulating the keeping and harboring of honeybees within the city of Norwood.
Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Bunsel. Second by Mr. Geraci. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. The ordinance passes. Item K, second reading of ordinances. We don't have any this evening. Brings us to item L, the letter that we have from the earnings tax department from Mr. Chuck Barlow, our tax commissioner. Mrs. Williams, would you please read the letter?
Dated February 24th, 2020, Norwood City Council. Dear Council members, on the agenda of your February 25th, 2020 meeting is an ordinance amending parts of the Norwood Tax Code, sections 182.02, 182.03, 182.05, and 182.26. The changes are in verbiage to align with the Ohio Revised Code and the federal tax code. The changes flow from the changes in the federal tax code. The changes in section 182.02 are tweaks and additions to existing definitions. The changes in section 182.03 are for the gross sales of tangible personal property, criteria starting with tax year 2018 and beyond. The taxes in section 182.05 deal with employees that have 100% exempt income and if a change to a consolidated business return is elected. The change in section 182.26 is language that was left out of the previous post, House Bill 5 ordinance, due to the litigation that objected to House Bill 5, but it's now time to add this section. Thank you, Mr. Chuck Barlow, Tax Commissioner.
Mr. Don... Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we have all three readings of this ordinance.
Well, right now, I just wanted to read the letter, and we'll receive and file the letter.
Oh, thank you.
That's fine.
But I would like to receive and file the letter, then.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Brayden.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Brayden. So the motion is to receive and file the letter. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. Moves on to the introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions. One, ordinance amending parts of Norwood Tax Code, sections 182.02, 182.03, 182.05, to comply with state law and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we go ahead and have all three readings of this ordinance.
So have a second. Mr. Donardo. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance amending parts of the Norwood Tax Code, section 182.02, 182.03, 182.05, and 182.26, to comply with state law and declaring an emergency. Ordinance amending parts of the Norwood Tax Code, sections 182.02, 182.03, 182.05, and 182.26, to comply with state law and declaring an emergency. Ordinance amending parts of the Norwood Tax Code, sections 182.02, 182.03, 182.05, and 182.26, to comply with state law and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Bunsel. Second by Mr. Donardo. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. The ordinance passes. Item N, administrative reports. Mr. Mayor, do you have administrative reports this evening?
I do not. I only have the letter asking to go into executive session.
Okay, thank you, sir. Item N, other requests to address council. I have several this evening. First, Mrs. Lori Newsome, please come forward. The topic is problem in the neighborhood with house in disrepair that keeps getting put off. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Lori Newsome. I own property at 4119 Forest Avenue. And I'm here about a problem with the house at 4121 Forest Avenue next door. This is a street of nicer, big old houses, except the house next door in question is in severe disrepair and it has been for decades. Apparently, the owner inherited it and hasn't been maintaining it at all. So the slate roof is literally falling off and animals live in the huge holes in it. He was given orders to fix it over a year and a half ago and ignored the orders. Norwood didn't do anything about it until neighbors complained last summer, and then they gave him until the end of August. He walked into the inspector's office and asked for more time, and then they gave him until the end of October. It still wasn't fixed. So they summoned him to court. And finally, he was given a date four months later, which is two days from now on Thursday. And I've been told by two city employees that whoever runs this mayor's court is just going to give him more time. But the time for more time has run out because the man is up on the roof, 69-year-old man, trying to repair it himself. And I'm not sure if we're dealing with somebody who is delusional, has dementia, or just there's no way that one 69-year-old man without any help can repair. So I would like you guys to see the photographs of what I'm talking about so you get an idea of how bad it is. Because I did email him to your Assistant Law Director, and he said he wasn't aware of how bad the situation was till he saw for himself. So these holes are so bad that a neighbor stands in the holes. And there are about five areas in the roof that are bad. So this is, I'm talking about the health department because other neighbors have complained to the health department because it's not just devaluing our properties, but it's a health hazard because it's a breeding ground for wildlife. For example, one of these shows a bat that entered my property from the bats multiplying in his property, and they died. And I don't know if it died from disease, if there's rabbit animals in there, or if it died from trauma, but it died in my house. So I can't stop the wildlife that may be diseased from coming into my property. That's pretty bad. And so the neighbor on the other side had a professional roofer fix their slate roof, and I got a permit and put a new roof on my house. And this man is making repairs that don't make any sense. So giving him more time to make repairs that wouldn't meet your code anyway doesn't make any sense. And I'm just wondering why no inspector has come to look at what these repairs are. Somebody needs to go over there and look at them. And I mean, he needs to be told that if he doesn't do something correct, that his house is going to be, I mean, if a big snow came this winter, let's put it this way, the roof would cave in. And the repairs he's making, I brought John here, who's, John is fixing, working on fixing my house up. We've been working on this house for six months since we bought it. And the repairs that we've made, we were told if we wanted to put even a dishwasher in or a disposal, that we had to get a plumbing permit and have a licensed plumber do it. But nobody is supervising the repairs on this roof next door. I don't know why he didn't have to get a permit and why nobody's supervising it because he's scavenging little pieces of wood onto rotted rafters, and he's using 3/4-inch boards where it should be 1 1/2 inch. And these repairs aren't anything that would hold up to a heavy snow. The roof will cave in, or he'll fall off the roof himself and get hurt, or something worse is going to happen over there. And there's about other areas that have holes in them as well. It's not just one area. If you see the pictures, you'll kind of understand what I mean. So I have done things like given information about people working cooperatively. If he can't afford to hire somebody, they would put a roof on for free, but he has to go apply for it. And I've tried to track down his nearest kin and gone over to Sharonville to talk to him, and they suggested that I have the city go do a, go do a, what do they, a welfare check on him and his 90-year-old mother who live there. Because they don't even want to go in the house. Because you can imagine with all the big holes, the mold and water that's been coming in, and this is something that's been going on for years and years and years. So I'm desperate to just get someone in the city to do something. Because it seems like there's a real double standard going on when people buy a home and start to fix it up. They want us to get all the permits and do everything right, and then this person is allowed to just let his house be almost falling over in the same neighborhood, and nobody's checking on his repairs, and they keep just saying, "More time, more time, more time." So we just want it to end, and we want them to say, "If you don't fix it, it's going to be condemned, or you're not going to be able to live there," and just do something. Just see how terrible it is.
The perform might be condemnable now, because I guarantee you there's black mold up.
He's watching what the repairs are that the man's doing every day.
I've been there six months watching this guy, and he's not getting anywhere.
The photo on the bottom shows what it looked like in August. It probably looks worse now. So we just want, I've gone to the health department. They said I'm not the first person who's complaining. Everybody acts like there's nothing they can do. But he must not be the first person in the city who just hasn't obeyed the orders. There must be something you can do. And we're just asking you to please do it. Whoever it is, it can do something. I don't know who our councilperson is or what you guys can do, but please help us. Guys, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you both, anybody want these?
Yeah, I mean, you can leave it to the mayor.
I'll make sure the building department has them.
Yeah, well, they, no, apparently his inspector had his knee repaired, and so he may not be able to get up on a roof or something. And I guess Jerry Stoker's no longer with you, so it's almost like they're kind of acting like there's nobody to do it. So that doesn't help either, and I know that's a problem. But still, somebody's got to do something to just end the, end the cycle of.
Nothing.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Forest, 4121.
Thank you.
Next request to address council, Susan Daniels.
Well, while he's doing that, I guess we'll get it started. My name is Susan Daniels. I'm right around the corner at 2063 Maple Avenue. Wanted to discuss the opportunity for Norwood to join the Go Vibrant organization, and as I call it, the Norwood Healthy History Trail. Because I'm the Vice President of the Norwood Historical Society. So what happened, or not happened, but the background of this is, last year, this is a Norwood Together initiative. Those are familiar with Norwood Together. We're trying to do some really cool things for Norwood and helps burst it up. So I've heard a lot from people that we need more walking routes, or just make Norwood more walkable. Well, why not combine the two with putting signs in front of really nice historic buildings or locations and just combine the two, get people outdoors and stuff like that. So this all started last year. Kind of a long process, basically. And what Go Vibrant has been doing is helping me through the process, how the routes work. I'm the one that created the routes, so I definitely wanted to make sure that all four words were hit so that people can go out their front door and be able to walk and see a sign. Okay. Just checking. So anyways, so basically, so I reached out to Go Vibrant, saying, you know, Norwood's very interested. I know what these signs look like. They're real vibrant, hence the name Go Vibrant. Little walking man on the routes. And it just helps guide people through the city that they're in so they can, they know, you know, I just made a one-mile walk or a two-mile walk, whatever. So basically, why can't Norwood be part of that group? So with our interest in it last year to get it going, and now we're kind of at the final stages, Go Vibrant has the million-step challenge every year. Well, actually, last year was their third year doing it. So Norwood was automatically entered into that challenge, even though we weren't fully funded for the signage because it does cost money. But out of their goodwill, they know that we have the interest, so they entered Norwood into this challenge. Sure enough, we won. Who would have thought? Norwood residents are very competitive, especially against Mount Washington. So a few of us went to the ceremony last year, which was held at Smalley Park downtown, and Mount Washington was announced the winner. So knowing that we were very closely watching our steps on their website, we were like, "No way, no way." You know, we've reached over a million steps as a community. We did reach out, and it was discovered that there was technical difficulties, issues, but that they did declare a tie with the Norwood and Mount Washington. So with that, Mount Washington was already given the prize money. What happens is when a city wins the challenge, they get prize money. That can go towards back to the city to do good things. But because Mount Washington got the money, Norwood, we didn't get any prize money. So the lovely Norwood Police Department stepped up and donated the money to go back to Norwood, which they did not have to, but they did, which is great. So with that said, this program does cost money. I'm not asking any money from the city because I am outsourcing fundraising. I'm collecting money, and I'm also using the money that the police department did donate so that we can continue on with these challenges and win again, so that we can earn more money to put back into the parks or whatever that is needed for Norwood that can do small projects. I guess you want to talk? Oh, I'm sorry. Before they go, they're going to talk about basically the background of Go Vibrant and how the challenge works like that. But what I'm asking tonight from council is the approval for these signs to be installed in Norwood and the actual physical labor, whoever's going to be doing it. I could be right there with that person, handing them the sign, they can go up the ladder. I don't care, I'll do it. But those are the only two things that I need approval on. And of course, the final quote to determine the final cost for this project is also determined by the number of bandings and the nuts and bolts which would adhere to the poles that are there. So we're going to find that out. I need to find that out as well from Norwood, if we have any laying around. If not, it's a lowest trip for Home Depot. But again, this project does cost money, and we are outsourcing the funds from donations, the police department, the Historical Society, Norwood Together, and myself. And I'm still going to be getting more money coming in, just not sure of the amounts. So this will be very close to the final project completion. Questions before they take over?
I actually have a question for process, I suppose. We all got your email, and it kind of laid out the ask. At the end, I was trying to figure out how would approval actually be granted? What would be the process in which we kind of say, "Yes, we're signing up the administration at some level." I don't know if that's Clint or Mr. Zimmerman or whoever. If we're signing them up, do they need our approval to do that? Or we ask, it's kind of like we're asking the mayor and the department to do that? What is the process to actually grant that approval? It was kind of, I was wrapping my brain to think of what the approval is.
Mr. Gabbert.
I believe that's just the mayor's call on that, just to approve that public works can do that. I did talk to Clint Zimmerman after receiving your email, and he didn't have a problem with it. He said his only concern was is to make sure that the signs that where you want to have them located, that there's already an existing pole. If not, and there has to be one, then, you know, that needs to go into the price. But other than that, he didn't foresee an issue at all.
Yeah, the routes that I submitted, that would cover all the four words. Luckily, our sidewalks are heavily polluted with poles, so it's kind of like a pick-up pole. So we really don't have to drill a new hole, you know, pole, so these would be go on existing poles.
Thank you for your email.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mark Jeffries. So I'm the Chair of the Board of Go Vibrant. We're a nonprofit. I'm just going to take two minutes, and then Chrissy's going to walk through one minute of what the routes look like and what the process is. So as I mentioned, we are a nonprofit. We have been around for 10 years. That's our mission statement, making an active and energetic lifestyle irresistible. So idea that if we make activity irresistible, then people will all want to do it, right? You know, so walking is a big part of what we want to do because it doesn't require any special equipment. Anyone can do it anywhere. You know, nobody makes fun of you for having weird form. There's no barrier to walking, which is why we're now in 21 neighborhoods. So if you go throughout Cincinnati, Newport, et cetera, you see the walking signs, right? We've now worked through with five municipalities. So obviously, City of Cincinnati, Newport, Covington, Gulf Manor, Delhi. So we've worked through a lot of the different nuances of different cities, how to install, et cetera. And Chrissy will walk through some of that process. So excited to help. And then I know Newport has offered to coach and mentor anyone who, you know, will along the process to install.
I promised to be brief. I just have a few visuals that I hope that you can see to show you what our routes are going to look like. So Go Vibrant does, we've been doing this for a lot of years. We try to make our routes flow in a way that is intuitive to people as they're walking along. Our signage is only at critical turns or on a long straightaway where you just want to make sure you're on the right track. And we do use existing poles and try to stay, always staying within crosswalks, and safety is a big deal for us. And we like to highlight the business districts, any historic things that you might want to point out and whatnot. So that's up to the community to decide that. And Susan's done a fine job with that lead. So this is the, it's kind of hard to see the colors, but this is an indicator of where all of the signs will go. And we typically have a start and stop point, like one main start and stop point, which in this case would be this building, this corner. And so that would include a master sign, which I will show you in a second, that shows what all the routes look like. We also recommend having one or two on a further point as well. But Norwood, it wins the award here for having the most mileage covered. You're over nine miles of routes once this is all said and done. So that is quite a project, and again, kudos to Susan for really working through that. But we do have an east and a west route that are about 3.6-something miles each, a half-mile connector up to the Indian mound loop as well. And the Indian mound loop is 1.5 miles. So any questions on that? Our design partner has put this together, and this is what our master signs look like. So it's a little bit easier to see. I know the colors might not be as visible to those in the back, but basically, it outlines the distance of each route, the approximate time it would take to walk that route if you're just walking a basic pace. So that people might come out at work, or come out in the evening, or the morning, or whenever they can do it, and get a great idea of how far they've traveled and challenge themselves as well. And one, just a quick comment on the signage. This is our, all of our signs have that same look and feel with the colorful routes outlined, so they're easy to spot and easy to follow. Now Susan's also given us about, there might be one that's not on there, but 16 different historic places that we're just going to call out with the signage along the way, too. So any questions?
I did want, you know, just imagine starting at City Hall, and then you walk down the street, and then you, you know, there's a big old sign that has, right in front of Victor Park, and then you walk down the street, and then you go see the library. There's a sign right there in front of the library. Walk down the street, and then you go see, you know, the fire museum, or I mean, UDF and the fire museum. So I think it'd be really cool to place these right in front of fun historic buildings. And then, yeah, I did pick some really large routes, but if you break them down into three, there are three small ones. But I did want to mention that the next challenge is May 23rd. So the goal is to have these installed, hopefully by then, and then have a big kickoff party and to invite people out to walk and to get our steps in, starting May 23rd, so we can get them logged. And have banners going across the road, whatever.
Sounds great. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So, yeah, I just wanted to thank Go Vibrant and Susan Daniels for being here. Just wanted to make a quick remark about the challenge last year. So I was one of the ones, James Bonzel was one of the ones that emailed, and I definitely talked to Mark, and I might have had an email with you as well. But definitely appreciate you all doing the co-champions. We definitely felt a little, after all the work that the community did, I mean, it was like after us in Mount Washington, the next highest person was like, seemed like 20% or 30% of the steps. I mean, it was so far down. And, you know, to, I think, there were some technical glitches and other things, and it was very, very frustrating, I guess, on our end, and so we appreciate that. But I also want to just call out Alice Rarica, Ron Murphy, and Susan for your all's advocacy as well. And Ron Murphy specifically at the Norwood Police Association, because they did kind of step up and kind of provide that replacement prize money, so it was appreciated there. But this year, I'm looking forward to beating Mount Washington and winning outright. And there's no co-winner this year. We're going to take it. And so we're really excited about participating again and look forward to having the routes there when it happens.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Newsome.
Well done.
Pleasure.
Next request to address council, Pastor Sonny James. Pastor James, what was the other gentleman's name? I can't read his writing now. Forgive me. Rice. Okay. So he had to leave, so you're going to have his time as well. Thank you, sir.
Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue. It is, I'm really excited about this month because all over the country, people are being recognized for the wonderful attributes that they've made into this country. Specifically speaking, people of color. Now, as I was sitting in my seat, I had to remind myself of my sweet wife's voice because I could feel the passion and unfortunately, some anger stemming up in me. And I could hear my wife saying, "Pastor, you've done such a good job of being nice." So I want to first start off by saying how excited I am about the wonderful changes that we as a people. And you see, when I talk about we as a people, I'm not talking about we as a black people. I'm not talking about any particular race of people. I'm talking about we as the gem of the Highlands people. Because we are all just but one race, and that's the race of the gem. At the same time, many of us realize that this community has had a reputation. It brings me back to... It brings me back to four years ago when I spearheaded bringing in the Department of Justice to address some of the real issues that plagued our history here. But I never brought them in to just focus on the negative, because I truly believe if you only focus on what's bad, you can never see what's good. And so with that, though, I am so excited about the new administration that has come forth in our community. And I'm so excited about each of you, because already I have seen us address some difficult issues. When we talk about the staffing in the city, individuals receiving promotions that we all know deserve it. When we address tough budgeting issues, when we address the streets, and then we have some residents come forward, and I'm watching this council come together and do something so amazing and awesome. So when I applaud you, I'm not being facetious. I'm not trying to be some whatever people have called me. But you see, a lot of times, people have said, well, Pastor James, why is it that you always seem so doggone negative? Why is it that you always are yelling at somebody? Why is it that you come up to council, and we're afraid that you're going to take this podium and dump it on somebody's head? Why is it that you're always so doggone mad? Why is it that when you people see you in the community, they don't even want to speak? Well, they don't want to speak because they're afraid, because they're afraid that I don't stand for the status quo. And I want this fine administration to know from me, some would say from the horse's mouth, it's okay. I want you to know why I'm so passionate about us being equal and treating people equal. When you watch the documentaries about how people were coming out of buildings and they were being water holes down because of the color of their skin, one of those individuals happened to be my mother. My mother, though, for the State Department, my mother was the manager, but nobody bothered asking. They treated people a certain way. And so I want you all to understand what drives me. When I come into this community, and yes, I've made challenges, but to date, not one individual has ever been able to come forward and say, Pastor James, you are a liar. What you accuse so-and-so of never happened. It did not happen, not one challenge. And I'm sitting there, and I'm looking at this fine screen, and I'm looking at our council person assist them, and I'm thinking, my God, that's a beautiful program, by the way, Go Vibrant. But let me just take you back about four years ago. We took about 100 residents, and we started a program called Walk the Wood. We had about 100 residents walking the neighborhood with the vision of being able to surround our fine community and having neighbors walk together and come together. But because I didn't go with the status quo, and because I didn't come under the umbrella of the powers-to-be, that vision never came forth. But can you imagine how an African-American man feels when the challenge has been, certain people take everything that minorities bring forth that's positive, and they take it for themselves, and then they throw it right in your face as to say, you mean nothing. Folks, that's one of the reasons why we keep our races divided. We don't have to be this way. We can come together and just say, hey, you have a great idea, let's support you. A few years ago, at Sherman Market, we were having a problem with dope dealers and druggie guys, and we had issues with firearms on the street. I took a group of residents, and we marched the street, and we challenged those dope boys. And I remember one in particular saying, hey, wait a minute, that's that Reverend guy. And I told them, you're right, and you're leaving here. Months later, the groups that are in Norwood, they're great groups, but here's the problem, and this administration needs to be aware. They want you to join their agendas that were already started a long time ago. But if you don't fit the status quo, you're ousted out. So what do you think this group did? They joined a parade, which was positive. And on the front of the brochure that went out to everybody in this city was the picture of a black man out front with a bullhorn. Now, if you don't believe me, go and pull up the flyers. Folks, I love this community, and I'm so proud of our administration. I'm so proud of the new faces. What I'm asking us to do, not just celebrate Black History Month, it's not about black, it's not about white, contrary to popular opinion, but people that look like me are never included or brought to the table unless they agree to come under status quo. If you don't believe me, have some strange person call anybody in Norwood, and here's what you're going to hear. Oh, that's a great idea, Pastor. Have you talked to Pastor so-and-so? Or have you talked to Mrs. so-and-so? We still have an energy, folks, in Norwood that is very discriminatory. It's very, very much inclusive to a certain particular group of people. We've already had these community groups. We met at Xavier University years ago. They just changed the name. But what you don't have is all of Norwood coming together, working together. And what I'm asking this council to do in this administration, when you see these projects, when you see these individuals, see who they're connected to. Because all we do is we change faces, but we keep the same mindset. And that mindset is, if you don't join us, we'll show you, we won't support you. Case in point, my wife runs Elevations in Richmond. None of you but one here may have even heard of it. It's an after-school program, helping a part of our community that needs special help. Make a note of it. Mondays and Wednesdays, 3:30 to 5:30, they meet at our library. Come and see what this wonderful program is doing. However, we have not had one, get this, in four years, we have not had one person come to address it. Thanks to MVK and some other partnerships, we take these children everywhere in the city. We even take them out to NASCAR. Everything that goes on, these children get to open their minds to new opportunities and new options, new choices in life. And I just cannot believe that we have a city of leaders and all these great groups with great ideas that don't come and at least participate. We did the mental health training. We got not, we didn't receive one supporter in the whole community. Yet we all know, mental health is a huge issue. So can you imagine how frustrated we were when one of these groups popped up coincidentally, offering the mental health training? And I get the emails, and everybody in the community is backing it and wanting to go and support it. Have I been angry, team? And I say team, because we're on the same team. Have I been angry? Absolutely. Have I wanted to break a few necks? Absolutely. But am I going to do that? Absolutely not. Because I know each of you are here for change. And I believe in my heart of hearts, a lot of that old nasty discriminative energy has found a way and been blessed to move on, and God bless them. But if this is going to be an administration for change, when you have agendas that come before you, think about everybody in the community and ask those same people, well, if this program is called together, why isn't everybody here? And that's all I ask you to do. Just ask them. Hey, at the end of the night, each of you are going to receive a 13-point plan for this city that I sent out in December of 2015. I promise you, when you read that 13-point plan, all of these awesome programs that you're hearing of now, oh my God, why were they never supported then? It's easy for us to say, oh, it was just because of this or because of that. Some people would say, it's because of this. I don't live like that. I don't think like that. But every time I turn around, I see an initiative, like the community, community meetings. When you read that 13-point plan from 2015, what made it so exciting now and it wasn't exciting then? In fact, I stood right here, right where that gentleman is sitting, and I had an individual walk up to me and put his finger in my face with a room full of people. Now, I'm retired now, so I, I didn't break his neck. But nobody said anything. And all I was saying was, we ought to do, well, guess what, we're doing now. So guys, I don't mean to come and be negative. I just come with passion to bring us as a people together. That's it. And I'm sick and tired of watching the same initiatives that come forth. Let's include everybody in this community. That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking. And don't make me have to come under any particular group to do it. If I have a great idea, come and support it. We took the police and the firefighters years ago, took them to the community center, and we brought in the at-risk youth, the police and the fire. They played basketball together, first time in Norwood's history. We had a great time. One of the young boys was caught later on the street. The police officer said, listen, aren't you that guy that Reverend James brought together? He said, yo, yeah. He said, I tell you what, well, we're going to see if what his plan did, if it did anything. He says, I tell you what, bring us the firearm. The guy said, well, I ain't no snitch, but I tell you what, you come back in 10 minutes, look behind the bush. Guess what the officer found when he came back and looked behind the bush, folks? He found a disengaged firearm. Our officers went home safe. Nobody was hurt, nobody was harmed, and it proved to the young people that if they just work with our officers and not just be so hateful, maybe they can actually live together. Nobody ever acknowledged that. Guys, let's work together. My name is Pastor Sonny James. My phone number is 513-487-8843. If you ever want to talk about bringing everybody together, I'm here, and I love you. I'm not against you. So if you see me frown, it's probably because I just ate a bad jalapeno or something. I love the direction of this new administration. I promise you, give me a chance to show you what I'm talking about, and I guarantee you'll still see it's in hidden pockets right here before us. If you have any questions, any comments, or if you just want to grab a Chipotle burrito sometime, let me know. I'm here, and it's not negative, it's all positive. That 13-point plan will be in each of your email before the night ends. Next time we come together, I'd be so happy if one person just said, hey, I'm sorry, never knew that was going on. But let's not let it keep going on. Let's not keep the hidden discrimination in Norwood, and let's really become the gem of the Highland for our people. God bless each and every one of you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pastor James. That brings us to item O, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business before us?
Another question on process. For the Dona Cappi's, is that something that we want to put on the agenda to look at again? Is there a time crunch? I'm trying to ask, I guess it's to us, if we want to go make a decision on that? Or, because I think there is a no or a nothing, those seem like the options. Either we say nothing, or we say no. It seemed like those were the two options that we were supposed to give. I'm looking for people to correct me and then to give a, like, what are we supposed to do about that?
Mr. Brayden.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Why can't we, why can't, why does that have to be nothing or no? Can we, can we approve it?
Yeah, well, the nothing is, I suppose, yes, because they've already got that.
So I thought, if I may, sir, I thought I made a motion last meeting that we put, placed this on the agenda for a vote tonight. So I'm a little confused why we're not voting on it tonight. I thought that my motion was to have public input and then a, then a vote tonight. So I'm a little confused why we're not voting on it tonight. That's a good question, Mr. D'Nardo. And I would pose that we have three means of an outlet there. We do nothing, or we vote yes or no. So, so yeah, I think a motion to place this on the agenda is, is in order.
And I don't know if it's Mr. Gary. I think that, that's obviously what I was trying to ask. You did it better than I did, I guess. It's legally, is that what, is council supposed to make that, can council make that call?
Mr. Gary, did you want to answer that, sir?
Uh, no. That is, I'm frankly not sure. I haven't seen the application. I'd like to see it. Does anybody have it?
Mr. Bonsell.
I mean, I've got it on my computer, but the, the application basically has, I mean, the mayor, essentially, somebody has to sign saying that, certifying that it's an economic development project. I don't have a way to really get it to you right now. Does anybody else have a paper copy? So, but essentially, like, the mayor could sign it, it has, like, the clerk of council could sign it, essentially, if council would have approved it, like, there's like a, like a list in parentheses of, like, potential people that could sign it, but I don't think it's limited to that. They just need a signature from the city to move forward. So specifically, this one does not move forward unless there is a signature from the city. So council could make a motion to ask the clerk of council to sign it on behalf of council, or the mayor could just sign it if he wanted to as well. Council doesn't actually have to take the action. The mayor could also take action individually on his own. The law director could sign it if he wanted to. I mean, yeah.
I understand. Yes.
I thought, and I apologize if I'm wrong, I thought then that when we discussed this at the last meeting, that the city had objected to it back in August, and we were just waiting on the hearing from the state for the TREX transfer.
That's it.
Mr. Bonsell.
Yeah, so there were two, so there's two items. So the TREX transfer, we had an application come forward. We had no applicant that was there that day, and so we chose to take no action, to not sign the form. There was also a license, there was also a regular new license that was granted, and I don't know if that was the one that we objected to at the time, or if there was another license we objected to. But I feel like that was, I feel like we objected, we objected that, we did not object to the TREX, because they really can't, the state has no registry of it until we like, sign the form so that they can get started.
Okay. I'll simplify my question. I think that we should, we had discussion on it, we heard more information, we should probably have another discussion. I'm kind of looking to the seven of us. And then we should probably give advice to have either us or the clerk of council sign on, on our behalf. So I'd like to do that, if there's anybody who thinks we shouldn't say so.
So are you, are you making a motion to?
I was waiting to see if anybody, sounds like silence is golden, so I'd like to make a motion that we, okay, go for it.
Well, if you, if you want to make a motion, we have a second, and we have discussions. Am I correct?
Yeah, do that.
Okay, let's do, let's do that, okay?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote for approval, or, and then the other, the option would be no, to sign on, to have Maria Williams sign on behalf of our council, saying that we approve the departments being issued.
So your motion is to, to act and to approve?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to be clear.
I understand.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mr. Brayden.
I'll second that.
It's a second by Mr. Brayden. So we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Gav.
I'd like to go through the chair to the mayor and see what his thoughts are.
Mr. Mayor.
There was citizen input saying that they're for it. I think there's, I received an email asking for, you know, some clarification on where parking will be and where, where there would be a patio, and just some interior stuff that really, quite frankly, I'd sent her directly over to the owner of Cappi's to say, let him know what you're thinking. But I, I think it's an interesting concept, it's something new, and could be a lot of fun for our city. new, and could be a lot of fun for our city to have, so I would be for it.
Mr. Dracy.
I'm still kind of on the fence as to yes or no, and I think that goes back to my questions that I don't believe were fully answered the last time that I did ask them, and it was as far as, what is this going to look like? Because, you know, I still drive by it, I see the exact same sign that was up there for Donna's, it just says Cappi's. I see the same paint job as what was up there when I worked at Xavier Police for five years. I see the same, I mean, it does not look any different than what it did as Donna's carryout, except the name of Cappi's up there. So I'm really having a problem, I'm kind of on the fence, you know, do I trust that if this Trex transfer goes through, that it's going to be this remarkable thing that looks like Loveland? Or is it gonna look exactly the same as it is, just spruced up on the inside? You know, let's polish it. We're trying to polish a gem, not something else here. And I don't know that I have enough evidence or believe that this place is gonna be spruced up enough to match the corner. I mean, right now, it does look like a hole. I'm gonna be honest, that's how I feel. I don't, I don't see any progress there, and I understand it takes money, but I've seen, you know, other businesses take money from one business to throw into their second business in order to spruce that business up and make some more money for that corporate business. So I mean, I don't know, I'll probably, I'll probably vote no on having that sign, just for the fact that I don't see any evidence of it changing at all right now.
Mr. DiNardo.
I had a few comments, but I think that's really good that you brought that up. I mean, we have some of the people there, we heard them talk last week, I don't know, would kinda asking those questions answer them, or is it just not enough?
To answer Mr. DiNardo, I don't know, because you can stand there and talk all day long, but proof's in the pudding. There's a soundbite. Bring me something that proves that, I mean, I have to see something physical that's going to prove that that place is going to change. I mean, renderings that say, in six months, this is what it's going to look like. I don't know, I just, I have to be able to see proof for me to actually, to get behind it. I know it sounds bad, but I know what it has been over the years.
Mr. Brayden.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. So, I wanna look at this through a small business perspective. Twenty-five years self-employed in Norwood, I've tried my best to have a reputation that people trust and would hire, and I wanna look at this through Mr. DeLuca's eyes, because he has invested quite a bit of money in that corner. So, and it's my hope that this, by doing this, by giving these guys another shot, that they follow suit with what's going on, on that corner, and I'm hopeful for that. However, I don't think it's up to us to, I mean, it is, this is a business, it's a small business, so whether they pass or fail, it's on their merits. We can say that we don't like it or not like it, but that's a small business, you might not like it, but they have just a right to open that business and pass or fail on their merits. So I respect your opinion, however, this is a place that deserves a shot, and I would hope that they follow suit with what's going on in that corner, but if they don't, that's on them, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's our responsibility to, you know, if they do not, they can, that will pass or fail on their merits.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Kelsch.
So having a small background in business and a degree in business, where I'm hung up on is the practices of the business, you know, the instances in the past of under consumption, sales to minors and that. What I wonder is, how do we know that's not gonna happen again? I'm not trying to hang people up on things that they've done in the past, we've all made mistakes, but when I'm running my business, if I keep making the same mistake, then I'm failing on that merit, and in this instance, you're putting other people at risk, youth at risk, people that shouldn't be around, that kind of thing. That, and being in a college town right there where not everybody is twenty-one that comes in the door, you're gonna have a lot of traffic business coming in, my question is, how do we make sure that they are making sure that it's not happening again? And we have these same kind of mistakes like that, to me, that just shows a little neglect.
Mr. DiNardo.
After we left the last council meeting, we had, especially because it's in my ward, so I've got a lot of texts and emails, and I'm really on both sides, and so I'm trying to weigh up these pros and cons in my head as I think about this. And in trying to do that, I was like, what's in simplest form, what am I saying yes or no to? And on the one hand, I like how you worded that, it's a small business, it's trying to just grow, and really, what are they doing? They're adding in four benches, or, at the moment, four stools and a counter. So it's one small step, but it's an important step to their business, we heard them talk about what that would mean. And then on the con, is any additional risk or trouble that would happen by bringing that in? In my mind, we heard the authorities on those matters speak already, the police chief is saying he's had no issues in any recent time, and the fire chief saying he has no issues for, that it would create any unreasonable fire risk. We heard them both, they were there in the meeting, and they both said that. So it's kinda like, that was probably the most important thing for me to get over those hurdles. Is this going to be an increased risk? Well, the people who would be dealing with that are saying, at the moment, we see no evidence of that. So things may have happened in the past, and it's important to recognize that and think through what this could mean in the future. Maybe it goes beyond four benches, four stools and a counter, but, you know, I'm willing to give them a shot and grow and bring something good to the city, because the people who would kinda handle the negatives have already voiced that, voiced their opinion.
Mr. Dracy.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people know that Mr. DeLuca and I have not seen eye to eye over the past year. I'm, you know, I do agree that he has developed that corner to match across the street with what is over there. I only am looking to hope that the owners of this Cappi's doesn't sit on this for fifteen years, and it still looks the same way in fifteen years, and making hand over fist money because he's got this additional license, without developing it into the community that was supposed to be said to be developed into. You know, I can come up here and I can say, I'm gonna build Taj Mahal of the city, and then all of a sudden I start making, I don't know, millions of dollars off of it, and I'm like, eh, I'm making money as it is, the way it looks, why do I need to make it look any better and spend my money? Use it for myself. Or, you know, if it was, if I had a, I wouldn't be so far on the fence on this one if I had a better idea that it would enhance the aesthetics of that corner even more than what is going on right now.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yeah, that did go through my mind too, for sure. Like, we heard a nice pretty pitch, and there's no way to really know, I mean, he's sitting here, there's no really to know what you're gonna do, yeah, I will say, I can't, but. The other thing that I was thinking about, I was just going through that, is there's probably thirty businesses right now that could stand for improvements, but I don't think we as a council are here going around rating businesses, rating businesses on whether they're improving themselves on a particular timeline. It'd be nice if we did, and I think that's what the Economic Development Committee is trying to think through, how do we bring in not just businesses, but good businesses, and they're working through those plans. But in this particular case, we're saying yes or no to a license for a counter and four stools, and so I'm just trying to make sure we break it down into like, what are we saying yes to? Are we saying yes to the promise that something beautiful like Loveland is going to be there? I think it's important to talk about and consider, but what we're really saying yes to is, is this a increased risk, and is that risk being mitigated properly?
Mr. Thompson.
Just a couple of comments. For me, the issue comes down to, is this a proper use of Trex? The whole point of Trex is to spur economic development, and when I think of a city like Norwood that needs economic development, I don't know that the development is going to happen there, is the kind of thing that you wanna make a special, that's why, that's why we're making this decision, is because this is an economic development sort of thing. So it's not that we're judging on whether a business deserves to be successful or not, or like you said, any other business, but we are responsible for knowing, is this, this is almost an investment that the city is making in allowing this Trex into our city. There's been arguments, does an additional liquor license dilute the value of other liquor licenses? It's hard to say, maybe in the long run, a little bit. I think what that does is it kind of puts me in a similar position as Mr. Dracy, in that if we're going to grant something like this, I want to know, I mean, based on what you all told us, is you're hoping to be able to, and grow your business to provide the capital in order to make that kind of stuff available, and that's, while admirable, isn't a plan, and so that's where I have issue.
Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hopefully, hopefully this will be my last comment, I don't wanna drag this on all night, but I wanna be careful that we stay in our lane here and realize that what we're approving is whether or not to let this business try to pass or fail on their own merits, and it's not up to us to determine whether or not they're going to, you know, just to bring up what's brung up tonight, you know, whether they're gonna sell to minors, because we have the Ohio Liquor Control Board that will take care of that if they do. And so if they have incidents there, we have the Norwood Police Department that can show up and take care of business if there's incidents. So that's not our job, our job is to, either we're going to side with this business and allow them to try to follow suit with what's going on on that corner, or we're not. So if they, you know, go breaking laws, or they ordinances, or if they don't, you know, if they don't bring their property up to standards with what's going on there, I don't think they'll do well. So I just wanna be careful that, you know, we're determining what we are determining and not trying to overstep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Dracy.
Through the chair to Mr. DiNardo, Mr. Thompson, and Mr. Brayden, I'll just knock it all out in one swoop here. Mr. Brayden, I understand where you're coming from, where every business succeeds on their own merits, okay? However, if we agree to this Trex transfer and allow it to go through, and they succeed, and the business still looks the way it looks, and doesn't follow suit with that corner, how does that, as council members, you know, it doesn't look well on us, allowing a business to not develop into where we're trying to get the city moving to. We're trying to move it forward into a beautiful city, and we can't do that when we've got something sitting back looking like it's gonna fall down. Mr. Thompson, I appreciate kind of agreeing with me there, and as far as, I understand that, trying to go back to all of my thoughts here, you know, yes, we don't, other businesses, we're not, we're not looking at other businesses and saying, oh, we're gonna pick each individual business out, and this is, we're gonna evaluate each one. I'm looking at a business that wants to bring in a Trex license, to bring in more money to that business, okay? But not really have much to show as of right now. They've been open for, what, since, whether they've been open, how long?
Four years.
Four?
It could be four years.
Okay, four years, and even before that, you know, it's still looked bad. If this business can't make it on what they're doing now, what, how are they gonna be able to do it with the Trex license? I think what I'm saying is, not, the businesses, the other bars, the other businesses already have their license, they're not coming to us saying, begging us, please give me this license, I have to do this to make money. Other businesses have stepped their way up, or gone straight to the license they're looking for, and that's because they probably didn't have the problems. I mean, I, I just, I have a problem when I've got an owner who comes and basically says, this was a death sentence for us because of what happened in the past. And I agree, I wholeheartedly agree with giving second chances, absolutely. However, I need, I need proof. That was, that was my old career, my old career, I had to have proof that something was gonna get done, something was gonna be accomplished, and right now, I just don't have the proof, except somebody coming up and saying, oh, well, we'll have like two employees right now, we're hoping to maybe get six. Doesn't bring a whole lot of income revenue into the city, for one. For two, the aesthetics don't look real great around there. Three, how do we know the problems won't come back? We've got, we've got a, well, we're really, we're really trying hard not to make sure that these problems don't come back. I, you know, I know Xavier students, and I know the fake IDs are out there. So I mean, again, there's a lot of things to look at, not just, I think this would be great for our community. And I understand, I completely get your point, trust me, I've gone back and forth on this for two or three weeks now.
So we have a motion by Mr. DiNardo?
One more point of discussion first.
Mr. Gabbard.
I would like to ask those that made the motion to resend their motions, and that we place this in a committee of a whole, and invite the owners back so we can have a little less formal conversation, look at plans, be able to, there's still a lot of unanswered questions here. Mr. DeLuca has some very valid points, you know, I was, I was around during Donna's, you know, terror, you know, that it caused. It caused us a lot of issues up there, and it was, there was a lot of problems. It's the same owners, it's not different owners, it's the same owners, and it's just a different thing. I wanna see them, you know, to be able to succeed and to have something like this, but I still have questions too, so I would just like to ask if they would do that so we could have further conversation and invite the owners to answer more questions, and to make sure that everybody's clear on this before we make a vote, and then, you know, in six months, regret what you voted. I mean, when I vote, I like to be solid on my vote, and I wanna make sure I do that.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I would agree with Mr. Gabbard. I do think it's probably more likely than not that things are gonna be fine if we approve it, and that they're gonna do a good job. I do think though that there is an opportunity for us to, if there's improvements like that Mr. Dracy wants to see, potentially we can see, we can try to get some of these improvements done before we approve the license, and not just hope that they'll do them in six months or a year. And I do agree with Mr. Gabbard too, that, you know, there is a business owner next door, and I would like to at least look into a few more of those concerns to make sure that it is the right decision. I did wanna address a few other points, so I'd mentioned talking about selling to minors. I had somebody call me today that was, you know, very much enthusiastically in favor of this, you know, a customer of theirs that maybe stops in there once a month, and he tells me, and he doesn't, this person doesn't look like they're under twenty-one, but he And he tells me, and he doesn't, this person doesn't look like they're under 21, but he tells me he's carded every single time. So, I'm sure that that is fixed, but if it is not, we can still ask more questions about their card policy. Regarding the fake IDs, I don't know how many people actually use fake IDs because if you have enough friends that are over 21, that, I mean, they'll buy it there. I just feel like these fake IDs are very dangerous to you, but I might be wrong. Maybe it's more out there than, I might just not know these things. But with the IDs being so complicated nowadays, it's not the same as that piece of paper it probably was 30 years ago. The other part of it, so economic development, I do think that we need to get the law department to at least just give us some kind of an opinion on whether, what that definition is. And I think that if it wasn't, if it didn't qualify for economic development, I feel like the state would turn it back down. But, but I'd like to ask because we can check on that. And then as far as the, you know, the problems won't come back, I mean, I do, you know, trust the police and fire chief and their opinion and they're letting us know that there's been no issues in the last, you know, two or three or four years. I mean, that's a decent amount of time to be running a business and now not having those same issues. But I do think that we should refer to the committee of the whole, you know, if it's, if we don't have the motions rescinded, then, you know, I'll vote no and then we'll make that motion to put it in the committee of the whole. But I think it'd be good just to have, you know, take another couple of weeks, look at this and just make sure it's the right thing that we want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsall.
Yeah. That makes a lot of sense and I'd like to change or.
You want to rescind your motion? Mr. Brayden would like to rescind your motion as well?
I second the motion for a vote. I really wouldn't. I'd like to keep it. I got a comment. Can I make a comment?
Of course.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I'm just, like I said, I really want to make sure that we stay in our lane here and we don't overstep and kind of, you know, get on people's rights and, you know, their right to run a business. I remember for at least 40 years, this place has been selling alcohol for at least 40 years. Cleny Lounge, Donna's. So, I mean, who are, who are we to now say that they, I mean, I get it, they've had problems, but we are not. So, my comment is for 40 years, this place has been running business and for right now, we're going to just jerk it out from under them. So, anyway, yeah, I can rescind my second. Yes, sir.
Okay. So we've rescinded the motion and the second.
And then, okay, go for it.
Mr. Gabbard.
I'd like to place the subject of Cappy's on Cleny into committee of the whole.
Thank you, sir. Any other unfinished business? Mr. DiNardo.
Oh, that's just seconding if it needs to be.
You don't have to, we're just going to place it in committee.
Sounds good.
Any other unfinished business? Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah, I'd like to play, call a economic development meeting for, with, this Thursday, the 27th. Work for you gentlemen?
No, there's a, there's a community council meeting that I've already committed to attending.
Which one?
The Ward Two one.
Oh, then.
So if we could do it, yeah, next week.
Yeah. How about, how about next Tuesday, the 3rd? I forget who's on the committee now. There's so many committees.
If you, me, and the two Eric's.
All right.
Yeah, next Tuesday's fine.
Gabby James and Eric Arret.
That's right. That's correct.
All right. Is that cool with you guys? Next Tuesday, the 3rd, 6:30 here? All right.
Do you have agenda? Do you know kind of what items you're going to have?
Well, the only item we have in there currently is murals to discuss, to start that discussion on murals. And then I would like to also place in there the plan and review and how we go about making sure that new developments, all those kind of things come through economic development for, you know, plan reviews.
What time was that by the way?
6:30.
Mr. Gabbard, would you email the toe, Laura, please?
Sure.
And we'll put it on the calendar. Yes, sir.
I'd also like to place into parks for them to look into the railroad trail, you know, the grants that are out there for turning railroads and the trails. You know, there's a lot of talk about Lawson Way, which is not even in Norwood, it's Cincinnati, but we get the beautification part of it. But the trail itself is not Norwood. But, that trail could come through and come down by Millcrest Park. And so I'd like to throw that in to see if we can start maybe investigating what that would encounter.
Mr. Bonsall. Go with that. Okay. Mr. Gabbard.
Yes, I'd like to also place into the housing committee about building permit fees, specifically increases.
Anything else, sir?
Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? I would like to move into the committee of the whole to report on accounting methods. I emailed you a gentleman that last, I believe it was last week or the week before. So, I would like to move that into the committee of the whole and we'll discuss that. And then, I'm going to check the calendar, I'll send you an email, see if we can have a committee of the whole meeting. Okay? Anything else unfinished business? Moving on to new business. Any new business? Mr. Bonsall.
Thank you very much. So, I've received, I've received a couple of emails now or messages regarding the demolition at the playing card company building, specifically regarding like rodents that potentially, while the demolition happens, that would be kind of escaping because they're now home fleeing. And I didn't know if we knew if they were going to, if the demolition company was going to be doing any kind of rodent control, pest control before the demolition to help stop maybe some of these rats and whatever from going to a lot of these neighbors' houses. Yeah, I wasn't sure if we knew if that was going to happen or.
Do you?
Yeah, if you don't mind, yeah.
Mayor Schneider?
No, I'm not aware of the rodent containment system that they're putting in place, but I can ask them how they control that or if that's a concern, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, if I could, Mr. Chair, I mean, I know O'Rourke who's doing the demolition has a lot of experience with this. I just, I'm curious if they've done this in other places. It was just something that was asked to me. I don't have a lot of experience with demolition myself, so I don't know how this exactly works. But if there is systems in place, it would be nice if we could ensure that they're utilized here so that, you know, we can stop some of these neighbors on Beach and Tunnels and stuff from getting inundated, which is what the fear currently is.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any other new business? Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, those of you may have heard, I'm sure you have, there was a shots fired incident on, I believe it was Worth and Carthage. So I just want to commend our Norwood Police Department for quick action, you know, to take the situation to a, to a halt and let the citizens of that area know that us as councilmen and, and we are, we're here for you and just wanted really commend our Norwood Police Department for the quick action and great service, so.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Any other new business? Thank you. Moving on to item Q, communications. We have one communication from Mayor Schneider regarding executive session. Mrs. Williams.
Communication dated February 18th of 2020 to Mr. Ken Miracle, President of Council and members of Norwood Community Council regarding executive session. Dear Mr. President and members of council, I write to ask that the council consider holding an executive session at its regularly scheduled meeting Tuesday, February 25th, 2020, as permitted by O R C 121.22 subsection, subsection G, section four, to prepare for, conduct, or review union negotiations or bargaining sessions with N F D and N P D concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Victor Schneider, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Bonsall.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I would move that we receive and file the letter and enter executive session to prepare for, conduct, or review union negotiations or bargaining sessions with N F D and N P D concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. And I would like to ask that we allow the Assistant Law Director, the mayor, and the mayor's legal team to stay with us during this executive session.
So we do, one motion, receive and file?
I think they can be probably combined.
All doing one? Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Bonsall, second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonsall.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye. In accordance with Ohio Stat Code 12122G4, to prepare for, conduct, or review union negotiations or bargaining sessions with Norwood Fire Department and Norwood Police Department concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Motion passes. We are in executive session at 9:12.
Turn the cameras on.[1450.32]